All right, good evening. Welcome to the January 14th, 2014 now. I was worried I was gonna say that the wrong way. Meeting of the Manchester Town Council, first meeting of the new year in the backstretch here going into our budget season. First order of business is the approval of December 10th minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the December 10th minutes.
Oh, I always do this and they put this in bold. So, before we go there.
Oh, public hearing.
We do have a public hearing ordinance 216 related to subdivision land. So, we'll open the public hearing. Is anyone that would like to speak on ordinance 216? Hearing none will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and move on with the general business meeting.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now moving on. Tammy's like to make a motion too.
Yep, I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from December 10th, 2013.
Okay.
Did we make one change for you?
Just me, because my name's not in there.
I don't have any comments because Dale felt them for me.
All right, I second the motion.
You have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
There's no additions or corrections, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is a receipt of the 2013, December 2013 treasures report.
Make a motion to receive the 2013 treasures report.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor's report, just a couple of brief items here before we move on. As I mentioned upfront, before Kelly reminded me to stay on task here, we are moving into the budget season, so we have our tentative budget workdays, so, you know, for those on the council, you can plug those into your calendars and, you know, we do have some flexibility to move things around, but we wanna try to nail down those dates as best as we can. Also, we'll publicize these too, right Kelly? Okay. Hopefully everybody made it through the holiday season in good shape. We have had a couple of weather incidents, nothing major, I think, in the past. A lot of it was heading into the holiday season, Steve will touch on those. That's really all I have. So, without ado, we'll move on to town administrative report, and Steve.
Okay, good evening Mayor and Council. We'll go ahead and go over the December 2013 administrative report under pending items. No change in the Sheets project, the SHA project in regards to the Route 27 widening project that wasn't meeting held on January 9th where Michelle Waller is the administrator and not our director of public works intended for the town. The MBE grants, they are moving forward, the energy oil is in final review with staff, and we do have a meeting next week with CQI to go over the finalization of that. No change on our sustainability communities application, that's still under review. In regards to the Victor Street property, we did have a meeting with Henry Building Enterprises last week to discuss our options, and we do have a meeting tomorrow with another contractor, so if anybody would like to attend that meeting, that'll be at 2:00 PM here. Under new construction, we have received preliminary plans on Manchester Farm Section 7, which is currently under review with staff. And in regards to the Old Town development, the developer would like some direction on this project from the mayor and the council. My recommendation is to have the developer present to present his plan to the mayor and the council at the February meeting. Both those items might be a moot point once we get into the public works part of my report, and we'll go over a problem with our wastewater. Under rental housing, the renewal licensing is currently taking place. Under Ms. Lane's items, on December 19th, eight employees were CPR first aid certified. I wanna thank Tammy Black and Rob and Murphy for conducting the training. A second training for an additional group of employees is in the process of being scheduled. Also, I want to bring the council up to speed on something. Kelly has been doing some checking on this. Of course, the property assessments for this area of the county that's long down, that will definitely have an effect on our tax rate when money's coming in. I know Kelly has made some calls to the assessment office, so once we get those numbers, hopefully we'll have those numbers before our first budget work session, so we know what we're dealing with. Moving right along, December 2013 public works report. You have in front of you the monthly water and wastewater status report for December. Of course, with all the rainfall that we've had, our wells are looking very good. I'll get into some problems that we've had over the last several weeks with main breaks and service lines. The Walnut Street Spring Sistern was inspected on December 19th, and visually they have found no problems, the final report will follow. Wastewater, the public hearing for our wastewater discharge permit will be held on January the 30th at 6:00 PM at the North Carroll branch of the library. Myself, our wastewater supervisor, director of public works, will attend to answer any questions that the public may have. Also, we have a new utility truck for the wastewater division, that'll be coming in this Thursday, it'll be delivered. Okay, let's talk a little bit about the capacity issue. We had an issue on Saturday, the past Saturday, Saturday, January the 11th, where with the ground being frozen and the almost two inches of rainfall that we received, our plant treated 498,000 gallons of wastewater flow coming into the plant. Our daily limit at our plant is 500,000 gallons per day, and we only had 2,000 gallons of freeboard left. Once we reach that limitation of 500,000 gallons a day, that's a violation in regards to the town and the treatment plant per se. Now, we've been dealing with the I and I problem for a number of years, but I think the big problem that we experienced on Saturday was the ground was frozen, and the water table is up from all the previous rainfall and snowfall that we've had in the past several weeks and several months. So with the combination of those things, the flow spiked up. Now, coming back to that, the I and I issue comes from, you know, issues with the manholes as far as where the manholes are joined together, seepage into the joints, seepage into the joints of the pipe. And like I said, we've been dealing with this, but now, we're at the point now where we have a good possibility of going over our daily limit. So that reverts back to the conversation that I had with you earlier in regards to the two proposed developments, Manchester Farm Section 7 and also Old Town Development. So I think we ought to take a hard look at, you know, what are we gonna do with these developments, because we're so close right now. Do I foresee us going over that 500,000 gallon per day limit sometime between now and spring? Yes, I do, because when we bring everything together with the water table where it's at, and the issue with the I and I, yes, I do, I foresee that. So, I want to get that out, you know, in the open, to make sure everybody is aware of what's taking place. So I'll be happy to field any questions you have now, Councilman Kelly.
Historically, how often have we gotten close to that 500,000 limit?
I believe we've hit like around the 475 mark, 475 down.
Is this something that happens every year?
It happens mainly in the spring of the year when the water tables pop, and you can watch your flows. When the water table drops off in the summertime months, when the water table's down, then we don't have that infiltration of water getting into the pipeline.
So when it comes to being in violation, there's no mitigating circumstances such as frozen ground, such as two inches of rain, such as any other circumstances?
No.
It is what it is?
It is what it is. And unfortunately, MBE does not look at that. They look at that, this is what your plant's rated at, and this is what your flow is, and you've gone over that, and that's a violation. Now, let me backtrack a little bit. I wanna make it clear that in no way, shape, or form, if we go over that 500,000 gallon per day mark, we are not overflowing at the plant. It just means that the treatment process is limited. So, let's say our plant's rated 500,000 gallons a day at 95% efficiency. So you double that, or you get up to 600 or 700,000 gallons a day, your efficiency goes down, so your treatment is not as effective. With these additional flows coming into the plant, it has an effect on the actual treatment process per se, and it also increases your electrical and chemical costs, so you have to look at that. So we basically, as operators, look at this additional flow coming into the plant and what effect it has on our biological matter that we have in the plant, and it's not good for it, because it basically dilutes it down, and it's no good. So we have to basically start from scratch.
Steve, you said you do foresee in the near future us exceeding the 500,000?
There's no doubt about it, yes.
Natural causes, or is there something particular you foresee causing that?
Natural causes, I think if we, you know, if we get another, you know, let's say four, five, six inches of rain, yep, we're gonna exceed that.
So what do we expect to happen with the two developments that you're speaking on?
Well, if we, you know, if we're this close right now, okay, and my last month, for my December report, we should be treating somewhere around 295,000 gallons of wastewater a day. As you can see on the report for December, we treat an average of 371,000 gallons a day, and that's under normal conditions. What I'm saying is, we may want to back off and say, look, we've gotta take a hard look at this I and I problem, we've gotta go through the steps to correct it, but we can't allow any more homes coming on the system that would, you know, that would add to the problem. You know, you look at 17 homes here, 20 homes here, you turn around, you already have 40 new homes. Now you have that much extra flow coming into the plant until you can control what you have right now, until you can control what you currently have.
And what's the number that we use for, I'll say, budgeting water or wastewater per home? Is it something like 295 a house, or?
It's 250 gallons per day for households.
Okay.
It ranges from 250 to 275.
So that's eight homes, is what the?
Correct.
And this is a Saturday, would we have been in trouble if school was open that day?
No doubt about it. You have your heavy.
You throw three schools in.
Yeah, you have your heavy users out there.
So this happened when we didn't have some of the biggest users online?
Mm-hmm.
So if we get something where the ground's frozen, we get a foot of snow, then it warms up, and we get two inches of rain?
No doubt about it. Now, we have made strides over the last five years. I would say probably 85% to 90% of all of our manholes are sealed at the top, okay? The D.C. on the road surface, there's an additional plate underneath there. A lot of water gets in through the top. What we're seeing is that the manholes are built in a way where they are stacked on each other, they're ranked stacked on each other, and we can actually see water infiltrating through these rings. You may have a manhole that's, you know, only showing about five gallon a minute, but if you have 100 manholes out there leaking that same five gallon a minute, you're looking at 500 gallons a minute that you got coming out.
So we're talking about with the 37 houses, if we allow them to be built, almost over 9,000 gallons?
Addition, right, addition. I mean, we see ourselves this close right now, I'm not a gamble man, and I don't wanna put the town at risk where we'll be paying fine then. So I don't think it would be in the best judgment for these developments to move on until we can control this issue that we have now.
Yeah, so essentially this number that we look at is an average number, but the number we really need to be concerned with is the peak number, yeah, the top of the spike.
Yes, that is correct.
Has our plant reached its capacity? Is there something we can do to modify the plant to exceed 500,000?
The most cost-effective way for us to fix the problem is to, which we've done in the past, is to actually line the pipes, and we've done that in different ways. So we want to try to line the pipes, but lower that number to keep that groundwater out from entering our plant. If we would expand our plant, let's say to 750,000 gallons, we're actually expanding the plant to treat the water that's infiltrating into the system, we're not really treating wastewater.
So rather than increase our treatment capabilities, we wanna decrease the amount of non-true wastewater we're treating?
Correct, that is correct.
How do you go about lining the pipes?
We did a section of pipeline, let me start it up off here. The first thing you have to do is identify your problem, and your problems could be, as I said, a combination of things. You would check to see how much leakage is happening coming in your manholes, that's visually, you can pop the manholes. Then we camera the pipeline between manhole to manhole, and see how many roots are coming in, see how many joints are cracked, see how much water's coming in. That's the second phase of it. Then the final phase is actually doing the lining process. We would have to bypass the flow from one manhole to the other, then we would hire a firm. A firm that we used in the past was called Citri, and they actually put a type of material down the pipeline, and they blow it up, and then it adheres itself to the inside of the pipe. Then you let it cure while you have the bypass pumping going on for a certain number of hours, and then you can go ahead and let it flow in. So they actually lined the pipe, patches any holes in line, patches any joints along the way, it's very successful.
Does this lining increase the pressure of the water? That might affect something down the flow to down?
No, because everything, all of our wastewater, with the exception of the horse mains, are just grabbing.
And what about the cost? What about the cost, I'm sorry? And can this be passed on versus if it has, if it's gonna be that we have to do it because of the new developments?
It could be. The cost, I did hear a figure probably about a month ago, don't hold me to this, but I think you're looking at the whole process, $55 an acre.
And what are we talking about?
I have no clue. See, you won't know that until you camera the line.
Okay, okay.
Now, that's lining a pipeline, that's not sealing the manholes, that's a whole different ballgame. So, but I believe that price is, I'm almost positive despite our knowledge.
Steve, one more question, you may have said it, and I apologize if I missed it. What is the cost of the penalty?
I can't answer that.
You're afraid to answer it, that's what it is, let's be honest.
That's MBE, right, I don't know, I can't answer that.
And that's a self-reporting thing that we?
That's correct.
We do to MBE?
That's correct, you're absolutely right. We show that on our MORs, our monthly operating report. And if we exceed that, the operator also has to make a call to MBE. I've only heard of one time where MBE has come off of the issue, and that was when Hurricane Sandy came through, because a lot of municipalities did exceed their limit, and I think it was a governor order saying back off of that. Okay.
Hey Steve, one more. I'm just looking real quick at the delta between the gallons of water we pump and then what we treat from the previous month, and then, so I imagine that's probably November and then December.
That is correct.
Does it look about the same?
Well, when you look at the wastewater, you're talking about wastewater?
Well, I was looking, I was just trying to get a rough estimate on, you know, what's the volume of water that's leaking into the system that we're treating? So kind of what's the, you know, what's the volume out there that we're trying to stop?
I think a good number to use is 295,000 gallons, that should be our normal flow coming in. So if you take the 371 minus the 295, I think we're running about anywhere from roughly 25 to 35.
Okay.
You can't really, you can't really use a comparison between the gallons of water pumped compared to your sewer, because we have four customers on water than we do sewer.
We also had leaks and things in those too, yeah.
Right. What we do at the plant is, on a daily basis, we chart the flows out, and we like to see the flows, the amount of gallons that we pump compared to the amount of gallons that we treat, flow and even line. Once they get all black, and, you know, we know that, you know, we have a leak out there, the line separate out.
So just based, just on, just a quick look, then we may have had somewhere in the area of 70,000 to 75,000 gallons get into the wastewater treatment facility.
Excuse me?
So that may be the volume that we're looking at, at mitigating that down a little bit.
Right, and see, it all equals out. I did some numbers, Kelly and I worked on this, I did some numbers on, as far as cost comparison, as far as electric and chemicals used to treat the additional volume of water, and yeah, I mean, we're treating clear water, it's ridiculous. That's one part of it, the other part, like I said, is the chemistry of the plant, the biological.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, MPDS Stormwater and WIP, I'm currently developing a stormwater pollution prevention plan for maintenance facility. I'm getting some good assistance from the county mapping department over there, they're helping me out with that. This is an action item. We're currently working with county reps in regards to a stormwater management facility off of Route 27 in the area of our state park. I would like permission from the mayor and the council to allow the county to move forward on the design portion of this project. This is something that changed, and I think I put it out in an email, that the county will now be picking up the design cost on this. Originally, we thought that we could pick up, with this facility, approximately 36 acres of impervious area, and since the county has met with MBE, it now appears that only 19 acres will be treated due to concerns of the elevation of Route 27, in relationship to that facility out there. We can come back to that. Maintenance roads and parks, we experienced four snow ice events in December that required a flouting and salting. We did receive word on January 9th, the town received grant funding for design work for the Walnut Street pond, and I did hear today that we are going to have a kickoff meeting to be held February 12th at 10:00 AM here, so that's some good news. And I wanna congratulate and commend maintenance crew member Tim Black for successfully passing the marrow herbicide pesticide applicator exam, and that would be a big plus for the town. Now we have somebody that's certified for that. Let's see, there's one other thing that I didn't get a chance to put on my report. I'm applying for a possible grant through the Heart of the Civil War Heritage. We are in the Civil War heritage area, and we actually didn't know that till we were working on a sustainability committee. So I did talk to Jared Schumacher today, and I also talked to Andrea Gerhardt from the county, and it's a matching grant from 50,000 to 100,000, and I believe what I'm going to apply for is, if I get approval to apply, if we make the move to the Victor Street property and the historical center moves up here, this building is not ADA compatible. So I'm going to apply to see if I can get funding to actually make this building ADA compatible. Now, it is a matching grant, it's a 50/50 grant, but hey, it's worth a shot, and I'm gonna go after it, so let's see what happens, what the, we've been very successful in asking for grant, so.
That'd be great.
I'm gonna give it a try. Okay, the action item that I had, and that was the allowing the county to move ahead on the design of the stormwater management project operation.
Do we have, I'm sorry to cut you off Steve, if you were, go ahead. Do we have any more information on, you know, what's gonna happen after the design phase? Who's on the hook for those costs and then participating in this level? Similar to what we had happen with the 27 and 30?
We do have another meeting with State Highways next Wednesday or Thursday, so we can discuss this a little bit further. The county has hired a grants person just to acquire grants for stormwater management. Speaking with Gail Angles, she feels very comfortable that the town's portion of this project could be picked up, we're grants, she has no problem. Also, we would tap into SHA because, you know, we'd be treating, you know, part of their authority service, and we'd be tapping into the camps. So I think, you know, collective group, you know, I think the cost would be very minimal, if any, for the camp. Now, what is that cost? I can't answer that. There was a number throwing, been being thrown around, the town's portion would be about 600,000 dollars. That being said, hopefully this will be picked up, you know, off of the grants.
One way or another, we're gonna be on the hook for something.
There's no doubt about it.
Right.
There's only two towns, to my knowledge, that are in the running for this, and that's the city of Westminster and Manchester, and we're that far ahead from everybody else.
Well, I mean, even in a, you know, even on a larger scale, if you kind of pull this project out of it, we're gonna be on the hook for doing some work at some point.
We have to come up with, you know, we have to go up to 38,000, 6 acres.
And this project gets us halfway there with a chance of getting some, if not the majority of the funding, you know?
Yeah, I really, I really thought we could pick up on the 36 acres, I was really looking forward to that, but it's not good.
Yeah.
It went to 19, 36 to 19, or?
36 to 19, that, the way I understand it is to do with the slope of the facility out there, the slope of the facility in relationship to Route 27.
That's just going into the design though, and I don't know all the whole process, but maybe as a design moves forward and the construction, it always appeal the number of acres, you know? Because that is a big variance, like the cut in half.
I will tell you this much, though, if the design started today, it'll probably, it would probably be at least two years, maybe even longer, before we break ground down and do anything. At least, at least two years, no doubt. But I think, I think now's the time we should, you know, we should move forward.
This is the best plan, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, but from what our discussions were, I think what we read, in my opinion, is the best, this is our best option right now.
Oh yeah. Especially if we're gonna be able to get some funding, hopefully.
This is the best.
I can't say enough about the county people, I mean, they're really looking out for us, we really, we work well together.
Well, you guys wanna make a motion to authorize Steve to move forward with a?
So I make a motion that we authorize you to move forward with the design process with the county. I'll second it.
Motion second, any more discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right.
Anything else, Steve?
No, I just wanna commend my people, you know, our people, they've been taking it piece no less. We've had two main breaks, we have service line breaks, we've had salting issues, we've had flouting issues, and I'm so ready for spring.
We've probably had more events already this year than last year, right?
Yeah, we did, and they, you know, Sunday we had a main break, then we had the main break on York Street, we had that real nasty service line break on Main Street which created havoc, and we've had another, we had another service line deak in between there, so the guys are really, they're doing a fine job, we have a good staff, I can't say enough about them, they're hanging in there.
I second that.
And some of these breaks, I guess, be attributed to the cold ice. Now, the one on York Street, that was, that was long, that was way before any weather issues, right?
We, it actually, it actually happened today when we had a snow event, but, you know, my, my opinion of what's happening on York Street is due to the heavy traffic, that is my opinion. And York Street was not built to handle the heavy traffic that's being used on the street. Tractor trailers were coming down through there, I mean, they traveled three, four in a group, and it was not designed to handle that traffic.
I remember some years ago.
I think the vibration, over the years, you know, that remains, you know, that's shown to nature, and I think we're gonna see more of that.
Yeah, I remember, how many years ago was it the town diverted traffic from Lyndeborough Road down there?
Correct.
That is changed back now, right? I mean, you can make the left out of there again.
Tractor trailers can't go, there's a certain, there's a certain limit, weight limit, they can't go there.
Oh, really?
So that's why they're all using York Street, which was not designed for that kind of traffic.
They all come in Lyndeborough Road, they take word tanks.
Well, they can make the left still, can't they? The ones that come at night, can't they make the left out of Lyndeborough?
Out of Lyndeborough, yeah.
Yeah, the kids can't use Halley.
Chances because it's just such a bear.
It's too crazy.
It's hard because you have that barrier, they gotta go out.
So the easy way out is to come in Lyndeborough Road, word tank, pull that hill, and then they use the traffic light right out here, you know, to head south down.
Just send that bill straight down to Annapolis then. Just send that bill straight down to Annapolis, then.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else for Steve? All right.
Did you need something from us for the grant you were gonna apply for, for the ADA compliance here?
No, I, I'll be okay with that.
Okay, good. That's a good idea.
I'm gonna do the intent, intent to apply, and then take it from there.
Good idea.
You don't need a motion. No one has any objections, I'd imagine. Okay. All right, police report. Chief Hess?
Good evening, gentlemen. Manchester Police Department responded to fifty-three calls for service during the month of December. Investigation resulted in eleven arrests. From a statistical standpoint, out of the eleven arrests, we had five for theft, one for fraud, one for aggravated assault, which actually was a life involved that occurred in thirty-seventy thirty Main Street. Two were for juveniles. They were riding an ATV around well four down off of Bachman Road. They were giving warnings, and they weren't listening to the warnings, so we had to take further action on that. Another one was for trespassing, we had a warrant for FTA. The officers stopped forty-two cars, twelve state citations were issued, thirty warnings were issued. The hardest hit for state citations was Charmel. The three key areas were Halley, York Street, and Charmel. One of the biggest problems that the town had was a theft problem. In the beginning part of the month, we first had scrap people, we had crews coming into town, they were trying to grab anything that they could grab in return for taking it for scrap, getting U.S. currency. Phil Miller and Manchester Motors, the service department, were the hardest hit. When they hit, when they hit Manchester Service Department, Mike Harris was able to get a partial tag on a truck. And Seleski went out, he did an investigation, he narrowed it down to a guy that they were looking at, a guy by the name of Dan Emery, who would come and go from town. He established identification, that was a theft less than three hundred, so he was only able to get a criminal citation. Then Mr. Miller, Phil Miller, he actually has some surveillance footage of two individuals that were taking his plumbing supply. As soon as Ron Gardner and Chris Seleski looked at the surveillance footage, they read easily, they could easily see it was Mr. Emery again, and assumed to be ex-wife. He married a mail-order Russian bride who was helping him to fix it down. So we bring those two in, we sit them down, a little interview and interrogation, and they confessed. She helped, she helped the confession, that he pretty much ordered her to go along with the thefts and take the scrap over there, and it would get the free U.S. currency. So hopefully after that event, they will be back in town in Manchester for doing those things, taking the thefts. Then we had the big problem, this was in Manchester Farms. And, you know, one of the biggest problems we have up in Carroll County, because it's just not Manchester alone, is thieves will come into our area, and they like to go through unlock doors. They'll, they'll check thousands of cars if they have to, looking for that one unlocked door so they can go in there and take the property. Fortunately, we don't have any type of forced entry type property crimes, where a lot of it's assault targets, easy targets. So they go in, they hit nine cars up in Manchester Farms, we actually had one lady watch the thief go from car to car. She calls the police, Carroll County Sheriff's Office respond. They stopped two individuals, but at the time, they didn't have enough to carry it on to the next level, there just wasn't enough after the city let them go. But they did get the ID from them. Now, the interesting part about this crew is they went from Dundalk, Eastside of Baltimore County. They really didn't have any ties to our town, but they thought we were easy targets up here, because they said, in their confession, they didn't think they'd get caught. She was carrying a fake ID that they actually stole from a woman in Walmart while she was shopping. She had her ID sitting in her purse, and I guess when she looked the other way, they lifted the ID. And this lady was not only showing this ID to police officers, she was using the same ID to do the pawn shops. We got surveillance footage, we contacted the pawn shops, a lot of citizen involvement, a lot of joint networking between the law enforcement agencies led us to these two. We were able to get two arrests from them for them. They were subsequently arrested in Essex in Baltimore County, and the female gave a full confession to doing all our crimes up here in Manchester. The male subject, who happened to be her son, he lawyered up, and he's also got additional charges from Baltimore County for the same type of crimes. So, you know, I gotta commend the officers. We are taking a hard hit up here, but it's, we're staying on top of it. Now, unfortunately, we were back there, we felt pretty good, and we just got fanned out. Two nights ago, we got hit along York Street. So we had one citizen actually saw the suspect, and we're kind of like trying to work off that information, hopefully that's gonna lead to another arrest. But Carroll County, you know, Sheriff's Office has been talking about, I can't stress enough, it's unlock doors. People just start locking their cars, or even their sheds unlock, and, and these guys and gals are just trying to find that easy way in, or get the property, you know? Just to touch base, a little bit of a follow-up. I think it was back in July, July eighteenth, and I'm sure you all know about it, there was a robbery that happened at Route twenty-seven and Route thirty, it was right there at the parking ride. Ron Gardner received a call, it was actually a mother-daughter team hooked up with another gentleman, and then his buddy came into play. The one gentleman by the name of Topper actually orchestrated it, and the mother-daughter team coached the victim into the parking ride so they could rob them. Ron Gardner was on it, he stayed on it, I think within two days, he was able to put the case down, he stayed on it with the state's attorney's office, and it paid off. The one, the one subject, Coroner, got fifteen years, the other subject, Reynolds, got eight. And the youngest, this guy, Miss Say, they're seeking three to five, and the main, the main person's gonna get twenty-five years. So that was pretty good police work, it was pretty good follow-through, you know, the case just didn't stop with the cuffs clicking, and it paid off. So hopefully they won't be in our hair for a little bit. Outside of that, everything seems to be moving along. We've been working with Mr. Mike Harris down on Main Street. He has a couple people that I'll just say that they want to be part of the problem, not the solution, for making our community a better place. And when we get the opportunity to relocate them at Hud House, and we've been, we've been pretty successful with that. Sergeant Seleski, and, I mean, Chris, yeah, Corporal Seleski, and Sergeant Gads, they got a pretty good rapport, and some people have been getting to do that of Manchester that have definitely been known persons for problems in the area. So that's coming along pretty good. Now, my next part, what, action item? Currently, the Manchester Police Department has six vehicles. The last vehicle that the Manchester Police Department purchased was back in two thousand nine. During calendar year two thousand thirteen, they sold their spare vehicle, the one vehicle they didn't keep for a lot, just in case a vehicle was bad. So they, we have six vehicles, one to two thousand four, two were two thousand fives, we got two thousand seven, two thousand eight, and two thousand nine. I know in prior budget, they tried to get, they tried to move to get two vehicles at one time. I think that's a little steep. I think I came up with a pretty good plan on how to rotate the cars out, talking to the area, small law enforcement, they tried to stay around the eight-year mark with the plan, we put us in the ten-year mark, which I'm pretty comfortable, and that would basically be one vehicle for every budget cycle until we catch up. And then I think it's actually in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, barring no accidents or additional personnel, there would be a time gap where we wouldn't have to purchase a vehicle. But in order to get that spare back up, and to be frank with you, to give the agency a four-by-four, because of a major weather event, the agency's pretty much useless. The four-by-four would enable us to be better efficient for the community, it would enable us to have the ability to carry more equipment, and it would give us a spare. And the four-by-four that we've been looking at was a small SUV, I did the price comparison and the mileage comparison as far as fuel. The state bid right now that they're looking at for cars is the all-wheel drive, the Ford Taurus, the Ford Explorer, which is a small SUV, it's virtually the same. It's seventeen city, the Ford Explorer's twenty-three highway, and the Ford Taurus is twenty-five highway. So the fuel's pretty much the same, the vehicle would be bigger, we would be able to equip the whole outfit for thirty thousand dollars. So we'd ask permission to move on with purchasing that vehicle, it would give us an added vehicle to the fleet, and then beginning of two thousand fourteen, we'll start to rotate the oil and power.
I think it might be important to note here, and you guys got an email about this, this week, too, that with the, the fuel mod, this vehicle wouldn't be used for essentially a commuter vehicle.
No.
You know, that, for something that's forty miles away.
No.
Right, I mean, even if it's around here, it's fine, but this vehicle wouldn't get, you know, the mileage kind of on our vehicles is dropping off a little bit. Put it that way.
I mean, speaking frankly, the exception of major events, and even right now.
Yeah.
My car, I, I pretty much lose gear, and nothing would be, nothing would be changed. I live in town. The mileage would stay low, you probably could get fifteen years out of the car. It's not gonna have a heavy electrical load, that's, that's one of the main contributing factors that destroys vehicles with the computers, the added radar, the e-ticket system, there's a lot of electrical overload on a car. And I know that a lot of companies say they're police packages, but electric to electric, there's so, so much they can do with the alternator, and eventually the cars take a little bit of wear and tear. This vehicle here, we wouldn't equip with all that computer stuff and the electrical overload and the radar and everything else, it would just be light, silent, or radio. And, and as Mayor said, mileage would be minimal, looking at it, wouldn't break budget, we wouldn't have to type, tug, tap into the public safety funds, and also, I think, from salary savings, the vehicle could be purchased with minimal impact to the budget, the current budget.
Right, so I think in, what we were talking about doing was, and it would be cleanest that we had a motion, and from this group, is to transfer the estimated thirty thousand dollars from salary, which we have the savings because of when Chief Hess came on, over to, I don't know if it's be, it'd be a capital purchase for the, for this Ford Explorer. So I, I support, I think it would give us some capabilities that we don't have right It would allow us to, to better respond, and I know right now, we got into some situations with the snow where the police were gonna have to rely on some of the other vehicles we had that maybe needed to plow. If something were to happen, they needed to get to something because, you know, they're dropping cars, everybody else.
And recently, the sheriff's office had a four-by-four from Hampstead, they were looking for us for assistance, we couldn't really beat them because of the weather. We did use one of the town trucks, but that's not the best options when they're not properly marked for law enforcement out there. Control.
I think it makes perfect sense, and I absolutely agree with having a four-wheel-drive vehicle on our fours. Why Ford Explorer? Any particular reason?
Well, that's the, that's the best one off the state bid right now, picking that off the state bid. It's, it's one of the cheapest models. We, we used to use them when I was in Baltimore City, that was probably one of the most dependable smaller SUVs that we utilized. They seem to hold up. And right now, it's the cheapest one. You're getting the vehicle, plus the complete package, the wiring, all thirty thousand.
Now, we definitely want to be on the bid, the state bid. I mean, that's, we don't want to do a private purchase, so.
I'll double-check this, a couple different ways to include Howard County, as soon as it be good, a good price, so it's a good price right now.
Because I appreciate your, your sense of budgetary responsibility, but cheap is not always better.
Oh, yes, sir, I, I understand, but I'm confident with that vehicle.
That's all I make sure, is if we're gonna do this, I appreciate that.
Is it essentially the same one that the state police would use, that they would purchase right now?
The sheriff's office bought a bunch of them.
Ford Explorers?
Mm-hmm. They're decent vehicles.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with the Explorer. I, I don't think it's excessive, but I think there is a little bit of a gap that we, you know, we don't have that capability if we need it.
I mean, you know, you don't need a Tahoe, like the lot of the state police go to, you don't need something that big up there.
Yeah.
Especially for our agency, but just having that capability of a four-by-four, being able, being able to get the locations that you normally wouldn't be able to get.
Yeah, I like that, that we have a way to get this done without getting into the, the public safety fund, or, you know, going someplace else. We can essentially transfer the money from one bucket to another in the existing budget.
We've saved it over the last year from not several.
And the administrator, I think the administrator, twelve, about a year's out.
Right, between that and the chief, right.
And I'm pretty comfortable with the rotation of one, we, I think we're spending on average like eight thousand dollars in repairs. I think they had to replace a transmission on one of the vehicles like too long ago. With this budget plan that I have, I'm, I'm pretty confident it'll lessen that cost and get us out of there, and keep the fleet fresh.
And one last question. This number you have, this thirty thousand eighty-one, is this?
That's exact.
Exact, like etched in stone, or is that just?
That's exact.
Okay.
And I confirmed that through Howard County and Brentford.
Okay, just asking, just so we know if there's gonna be any adjustments, or, okay.
Taxes, tags, everything that's in that?
Oh, you get me with, I don't know that. I gotta check the tax.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
But we said price of the vehicle, so that's.
They, they get all of us that way, don't they?
No taxes, we don't, we don't.
No taxes, tags, I think we can, we can pull that out of, you know?
Yeah, well, I, I think if, if we start with this figure, the, the rest is kind of...
Yeah. I mean, if we're within a couple hundred dollars, I'm pretty sure we could squeeze that from somewhere.
That, that's gonna get us to where we need to be.
Yes, okay. Make a motion?
It's ready to achieve.
Yeah, if somebody wants to make.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the purchase of the two thousand fourteen Ford Explorer, being in approximate cost of thirty thousand eighty-one dollars.
I second the motion.
It's just okay for the, if, if, Kelly, you can tell me what the motion needs to say, but...
You could transfer the funds.
Yeah, the transfer of the funds from...
From the salary to the capital budget.
And then, along with that, we'll transfer the funds from the salary, salary to the capital budget to purchase it.
Still okay with your second?
Yeah, still okay to second.
So we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Anything else for the chief?
Good report.
Um, yeah, I just, and, and, you know, for those guys in the community, if somebody's watching, listening, whatever the case may be, I know I've said a couple, you know, months in a row, where the, the police department is, is continuing to evolve, and in my opinion, I think they're doing a great job. If you have things that, you have items that you're concerned about, areas that you think are issues, please continue to communicate those to us, because you, you know, we don't have the same copy we have here, but the chief is listing out, here's the areas we're working on, here's the hot spots. This is where we're, this is where we're focusing. So if, you know, as, as those areas maybe are addressed a little bit, something else can rotate in. So please continue to communicate those things in, so we can be responsive as we can. All right. Ordinance two sixteen, chapter two hundred, subdivision of land. Michelle, do you wanna, do you mind giving a brief synopsis of, real quick history of why this exists and, and what we're doing?
Recently, we did zoning code, chapter two fifty of the town or events. We realized that we had, the subdivision of site plans were given in two, both in the zoning chapter and in the subdivision of land chapter. So all this was doing was incorporating what we had in two chapters and putting it in the subdivision of land, which is wrong. So now, site plans and developments residential are in subdivision lands. So we took the two, and we had a little bit of things that we needed to clean up between the two that we were...
Our timeline, timeframes that didn't match up. So it was a lot of housekeeping and just getting our codes straight. We really didn't take anything away. Right.
And I think this is one of those things, Dale and I, if anybody else here was on planning a zoning at one time, but there's, you kind of get on these parallel paths where you try to, you know, adapt and, and prepare for things, and then you get a couple years down the road and find out that a couple things contradict, and a couple things are, are duplicative, so. That's where we are, we're cleaning some of those things up, and that's an ongoing process. So we had, introduced last month, we had a public hearing, and this is open for motion and approval.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance two sixteen with the revision combining the two areas into one chapter.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, a second, and a discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Question, comments from the community? Does anybody sign in that would like to speak? You can still speak, even if you didn't sign in, you can come on. Just let us know who you are, and you can go from there.
I didn't sign in, but I heard you guys talking about the problem with your sewer, the sewer system, and I understand that you guys do a good job, I mean, out there before coming to here. I didn't even know there was a problem with it, haven't noticed anything going on, but I'd like to say that it seems like the city has a bad case of putting out fires as they come up. Well, yeah, town, whatever. Has a bad case of putting out fires as they arise, and that may seem to work, but long-term, that may become more expensive than actually trying to pull the problem out of its root. With the new towns, with the new part of Manchester... With the new towns, with the new part of Manchester Farms being built, and the problems with the current sewage system, it might, I was wondering if you guys knew, would it be more effective to redo the sewage system long-term than to keep lining and recovering manholes and fixing leaks and paying for all this extra electric and chemicals? Is it more effective to actually try and fix the pipes themselves, put new ones in, and perhaps get better technology to go along with it to prevent future problems?
Well, that's a good question. If I were to relate that to, you know, maybe something you're thinking of, right? So if you have a car, and the car gets to be one-tenth of the age of maybe what our sewer system is, and then, you know, the tires are bald and everything's leaking and squeaking all over the place, and you say, well, I'm just going to, it's just easier, so let's just get rid of this car, let's buy a new car. The public works, I'm sorry, the town administrator, having a lot of experience in the public works, may be able to address this with more definitive numbers than I can, but I think that when we're talking about lining pipes or fixing pipes, you're right, like, if, you know, we can't fix a water leak, so if a water leak happens, it happens, and you patch it. Redoing everything may be so cost prohibitive. So, for example, it may cost us, we may be talking, what do you say, $55 a foot, so maybe that gets to be a couple hundred thousand dollars, which sounds like a lot of money, because it is a lot of money. But if you were to redo all of the pipes in town and this stormwater management, no, I'm sorry, the wastewater treatment plant, you may be talking 15 or 20 million. So it becomes, you know, how do we get our hands on 15 or 20 million? Somebody has it, then, yeah, ideally, maybe that is, you know, a better way to go.
Well, it may be $55 per feet, but how many feet are in the county, and how does that match up? And times the next 10 years, how does that match up? Is a good question.
It is a good question.
Yeah, I don't know if we know how many feet.
We'll defer that to Steve, the town manager, and let him answer those questions.
And the other thing I was going to say.
You're not trying to lend us money, are you?
And the other thing I was going to say is actually something that you guys might want to consider with Manchester Farms, Section 7, is it sounds like you guys are just going to build another Whispering Valley, Hally Hills, into those fields there. Well, I'll tell you right now that a lot of people, like, just knowing people and their parents, don't like those developments at all. Sure, there's more people in Manchester, but a lot of people don't like them, and a lot of people think they're unclean, and, like you said, like Mr. Hess there said, it actually is more chance for crime rates to go up. So I don't know if they've actually been going up or not. I've been here before, but just listening. It sounds like with these developments, it's more houses, more people, more chances for crime. So actually, and the other question that arose with the wells and water supply, would it be more effective to actually try and build better houses on more plots of land than to build a large number of houses on smaller plots of land? Because those bigger, better, more expensive houses could also be more tax revenue for the people living in them, because it's more land, better houses, and probably wealthier people living in those houses, because they're better houses.
That's a lot, yeah, there's lots of value. So.
You're going to be in Indianapolis one day. I can see this right now.
You know Senator Getty?
I really appreciate and like your why-not attitude of kind of looking at things from a fresh perspective.
I'm saying, I don't know any numbers here. I'm just saying, listening to this, it sounds like sometimes it's a case of, oh my gosh, fire, put it out, new fire, put it out.
That, you know, that's not, it's not a, that's a fairly good observation, right? But it's kind of, so if we were to look at the Manchester Farms, this is kind of how I try to think of things. It's not, we're not the ones, so we're not building houses, right? So the town isn't in.
Yes, I understand. You guys give it out to contractors, and they build houses on it.
Not really. Not quite.
And then they build and sell those houses.
No. No, so, yeah, we're, so, individual people or companies, they own the land. We don't own the land, so we don't sell, we don't, we don't really get anything, other than what our job is, is to make sure that with that land, that they have to follow rules that are fair to everybody when they build houses on land that they own. So it's not, it's not our land. So they, they own 50 acres, and you can put 50 houses on that, well, it's our job to enforce the rules, to make sure that they follow the rules.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, we didn't get your name yet.
Oh, my name's John, John Getze.
Okay.
And I understand that you guys, you make, you can, I understand that you guys can tell them the houses have to meet these certain regulations and rules. Well, I'm saying, if you guys said something like, you can only build this many houses on this much land, it would lead to better houses on bigger plots of land, which could, long run, be more money, which could actually help cover your sewage problem.
So I think there's a couple considerations going in there, where, you know, ideally, we would prefer to keep the number of houses down, but there's a counterbalance between what things are zoned, so if it's zoned, you know, R40, which is basically one acre, one house per acre, right? So we would prefer not to take on a bunch of additional houses, because it's just more things we have to do.
More sewage, more paperwork, more utilities, more people, higher crime rates, more people in the school system.
But schools, we don't do schools, schools is county.
That's not your problem.
Right, I'll give you their address, though. And I'll drive you down there.
If I could add, too, there are laws that protect landowners. You know, people have said to us in the past, why don't you just put a moratorium on building? Why don't you just put a little stamp down and say, from this point forward, we will stop all building, because we're just, there's too many people here. There are laws that protect the landowner. If we say, we're going to stop that, we have to stop it with a particular reason, cause, and with an end date. So there are a lot of protection out there, so we just, we can be very careful just telling somebody, you got to stop building, because we think it's too many, and that neighborhood doesn't like that neighborhood.
Well, I'm not saying.
We have a lot of restrictions on us.
I fully agree with you, though. We need to be more proactive than reactive, and that's what, like you said, we're putting out the fires, we're reacting to the situations, but we need to be proactive to protect Manchester for the future. So I agree with you.
I think if you look at things like, it's hard to, it's hard to get a handle on everything probably in one day, but I think if you look at an example, and you can have, you could see it there, you could take a look at mine, right, of what we were just talking about with the police cars. So purchasing a four-by-four, that's a proactive measure, right? And the budgeting process, not just from, you know, one-year budget, but looking at capital purchases, so things we buy, cars, buildings, larger projects, looking at that, we don't look at that on a one-year, we look at that on a five or five-plus, and then that rotates. So that's, that's a proactive look at, what are we going to need, what are the things that go wrong? You know, we're doing projects, and Mr. Miller talked about it earlier a little bit, where we're mapping out where all the pipes are in town, and what they do and where they go. So those are things that we look at kind of over time. And when he was talking about the project down here where the skate park is, that's probably, that's a proactive initiative that we're looking at, where, very simplistic terms, the state is requiring us to treat more impervious surface, meaning parking lots, roads, all rooftops, so we have to come up with a plan to treat more of the water that's rolling off of, everything the water can't go into, and then treat that like it's, you know, wastewater, right? So we need to look at long-term plans for how do we meet those requirements, rather than waiting, I mean, it's, if we waited till 2017, then I think you're right, then that's a fire.
Just so you know, too, we also go through a pretty comprehensive capital budget planning that's many years out, so the different departments within the town, whether it's water, treatment, the folks that actually help make sure we have clean drinking water and so forth, all those different areas, the maintenance, the administrative staff, they look at what are the capital needs of the town, and all the maintenance to keep those things intact and safe for the community. So there's a lot of juggling of local issues that are happening in Manchester, as well as complying with laws that are bearing down on the local municipalities. So we have to have a good balance, but we're also trying to also be good stewards of the revenue that we bring in. And so those budgeting sessions may be of interest to you, but just so you know, that is something that we take very seriously, and it happens every year, and starting about this time of year. So, and those are so that we don't have fires to put out all the time. We're actually planning for maintenance and upkeep, and as Chief Hess went into a pretty descriptive plan for just car turnover. So that's just one small example of the many, of the many areas we have to budget for. Everything just costs so much money.
The other thing I wanted to say is, if you can't fix the problem at its source, you can fix it in the trunk. Mr. Miller mentioned that it would cost more money with chemicals and electricity in the facility. Well, is there, like, a way to find a cheaper chemical that works for, like, the same amount of waste sewage treated, but it's cheaper per cubic ton treated?
I think one thing, John, that we're looking at is, when I mentioned that, you know, we're treating 40, maybe 45% of clear water. We are not treating wastewater, and that's what we, that's what costs so much, as far as electrical cost to pump that water and also to treat it. So once we keep the surface water or the clear water out of the wastewater lines, and we're treating strictly wastewater, then we're running as efficiently as we can.
That really wouldn't solve the problem? It would only solve like 50% of the problem?
Yeah, if we get that clear water out of the, out of our system.
So cheaper chemicals would only be like 50% of the problem?
If we could.
It'd still be wasting a lot of electricity and chemicals?
If we don't get rid of that water.
Okay.
That's correct, yeah. And to answer your question, the technology, you know, that I spoke about, lining the pipes, actually, when the process is finished, and believe me, when we start the process, we would look at the pipes, and if they were at the point of needing replaced, then we would replace the pipe. I don't really feel that they're at that point. So if we line the pipes, and at the end of the project, we would basically have a brand-new pipe length, so.
Okay.
To answer your question, but you impress me.
Looks like we're our new town manager. How old are you?
Yeah, 13.
13?
But going along with what Ms. Smith said, everything is so expensive, it's kind of obvious everything's getting more expensive. So lining the pipes may work, but if you go, well, everything's going to double in price in the next 20 years, and by that time, lining might not be effective.
That's correct.
You're talking $20 million to replace pipes.
That's correct. You would have to, you know, you would have to evaluate that at different times, you know, what would you want to do? Correct.
It's also your chance that everything, it's cheaper, it's a gamble.
That's correct. It's just like the old adage, you know, just because the roof leaks, don't sell the house, fix the roof.
Just remember, $20 million now and $20 million in 20 years.
It's a big difference.
Right.
Because $20 million later could be $2,000 now.
Right. Very smart. Was this a project, or did you do this on, was it a school project, or did you do this on your own?
I'm here for citizenship in the community. I had to pick a problem that was discussed during one of the meetings, that seemed relevant or of interest to me, and then discuss it with one of you, but I seemed to get the opportunity to discuss it with all of you.
Well, good. Very good, good for you.
John, is that through, uh?
Counts.
Through 320?
Six, six, five.
665, very good.
Good for you.
Some of the numbers on, like, the Manchester Farms, Section 7 and all that, that'd be helpful, like, with that.
Yeah, Section 7, I think it's just.
That, but those new houses also add on, so if you lose less houses, it's also less work on the sewage system.
I think what Ms. Baldwin says, is that Section 7 is really early in the process, so there's not a lot concrete.
There's not much information to give you yet.
What you guys were talking about, I was like, oh, that sounds like something they've been working on since, like, January of last year.
It has been a while, but it takes a long time.
We were just being proactive.
See that?
Getting rid of the fuel, 20 is fine.
That's very good.
Good analogy.
Thank you for your time.
Very good, absolutely.
Thank you.
John, I sense that you didn't just do this because it was a project. Did you really care?
Yes, it was very interesting.
Steve said, very impressive. What I would say is, don't ever stop asking why, and don't ever stop challenging government. Carry that through life.
Are you available as a consultant?
The way I see it, in 10 years, he'll be out of college. Steve, how much longer do you have? Because it sounds like he has your job right on target.
Yeah, I tell you what. Good job.
Very good, very good.
Very good. Wow.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anybody else?
I don't know who can top that, so.
All right, we'll move on to community reports, then. Councilman Smith?
Thank you to Kelly. She went to the last meeting because I was sick, but basically, the cable commission is still working on finalizing the franchise agreement. That's really all they discussed, and I can't really give any more information until hopefully next time.
Okay, Councilman Black?
There was not a planning and zoning meeting from December, so we'll be convening again next week, talking about Manchester, Section 7, so.
Okay. Councilman Pacella?
Nothing to report, though. There is a meeting coming up this week, that I will be in attendance.
Okay. Councilman Howe?
I had a meeting last night at Charlotte's Quest, so I'll give you a rundown of some of the programs for the first half of the year that are available. April 1, there will be a library exhibit at North Carroll branch of the library for one month. It will include books and pamphlets and some artifacts, I guess, we're dug up back there. April 22 at 10:00 a.m. is the Easter egg hunt. May 17 is a plan exchange at North Carroll branch of the library. And May 24 is Spring Fest from 12 noon to 4:00 p.m., which is basically an introduction to the nature center. There's fun and activities for all ages, food, petting zoo, reptiles, all kinds of things. And June 21 from 8:00 a.m. till 12 noon will be the first bocce ball tournament.
Excuse me, what was the date in May?
For which one?
It was May, you said the one.
There's May 17 is a plan exchange, and May 24 is Spring Fest, back at the nature center.
Okay.
So a lot of good things for the coming months.
Okay.
Councilman Wilder?
Haven't been any particular governmental meetings that needed my attention or my attendance. On capital projects, Steve, two ongoing projects, if you could give me just a 10-second update, and two particular call my attention, the security cameras for Christmas tree park, and the weather station equipment for the spray field. Is there anyone on your plate on that?
Nothing on the cameras. We're going to meet with our staff maybe later on this week, beginning of next week, and then bringing together information on the weather station. We're looking at a remote weather station, three poles, exactly.
Good. I'll keep in touch with you on those.
John, three poles, exactly.
One other thing, Steve, we didn't talk, can we, do we have, can we find some money in the budget, someplace to get going on this thing we talked about, instead of doing the recycle bins now, we would get some decals or stickers made so that we can?
Yeah, we actually hooked into that, we hooked into some stickers, we actually hooked into larger bins, but we hit the, I don't want to move it to them.
We do have the round recycling stickers that, I'm saying, people could come in and say, you know, we need more than a bin, so we give them out, so put them in a trash can if you want.
Do we have some?
Yes, we do.
Can I bring some with me today?
Absolutely. And we've heard people say, you know, just make sure at the end of the driveway, you can't, you're trashing one side of your runway, and recycling on the other, that helps the other. That helps the trash haulers and the, you know, to get used to, to, if it's possible.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, start to, get some kind of initiative going where we try to get information out to the community to, you know, come in, get these stickers. Let's try, like, repurpose some of the trashcans out there so we can recycle more, get the recycling percentage up, and then try to, you know, mitigate some of that increasing cost of the trash removal.
Fair order, one final. I have, we got off track on the wastewater issue. In regards to the old town development, do we, do we want to recommend that development in February? Do we, do we want to help with that?
Well, is there something in between? Like, do we have to recommend that they come in, or can we invite them to come in and kind of explain where they are, and then we can also explain where we are?
Let's do that. We'll shoot for the February meeting.
I think the sooner we communicate, you know, kind of what, where we are, what our considerations are, the better.
Seems to me it would be a moot point considering the sewage problems.
That's correct.
I say no.
What I can do, I can commentize to the developer, explain our situation to them, make a decision, whether you'd like to commit a February meeting with the council or not.
That's the kind of thing, I wanted to stay away from where encouraging them to or not encouraging them to.
Give them the option.
Correct.
Anything else for this group? None? entertain a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good night.